All right, ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, City of Jackson, Mississippi, May 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. This evening, we are honored to have Dr. Ronald K. Moore, Senior Pastor of Stronger Hope Baptist Church, Ward Two, to lead us in the invocation. Following the invocation, I would like to ask Mr. Foot if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Shall we bow to pray? Gracious and Almighty God, we thank you for the privilege to gather here today in service to our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance and all that is. All that is discussed and decided in this meeting grant each council member clarity of thought, fairness in judgment, and compassion in decision-making. Help us to work together in unity, setting aside personal interests for the common good of those we serve. Bless our city, its leaders, its workers, and its citizens. Keep us mindful of those in need and diligent in our responsibility to build a safe, just, and thriving community for all. May peace and respect govern our conversations, and may God stand with us. In the name of our Lord and Savior, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is the life of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Moore, for that wonderful invocation, and thank you, Mr. Foot, as well. Colleagues, any introductions or announcements this evening? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, I would like to welcome the members of Jacksonians for Jackson that have joined us this evening in the chambers, and I want to thank them for their civic engagement, civil civic engagement with the government process over the past years since they've got started. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foot. Anyone else? All right, okay. All right, then, colleagues, we're going to move now into public comments. We have, well, this stack of paper is only growing, excuse me, in a minute. Here it is. All right, so, here we go. We have several who would like to speak about non-agenda items, and then we also have five who are here to talk about the agenda items. And so, I would like to start with the agenda items, and I just would like to pause and remind you all that you have three minutes, and I'm respectfully asking that you respect that time limit. When you come here to the podium, make sure that the mic is on, it'll be green, the light will be green, and then state your name for the record, and then you may begin speaking after that. And so, thank you for that. Brittany Bowman is here to speak about number 48 Chapel Ridge Apartments. Ms. Bowman, are you here? Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brittany Bowman, and I'm here to speak about the Chapel Ridge Apartments. Mr. Ward, the president of ASJAN, the Association of South Jackson Neighborhoods, brought it to my attention, along with Representative Fabian Nelson, in regards to the issue, and I see some other participants that were actually physically there to participate in the cleanup of the project. I see Mr. Service here, and I know he had some team of guys that were also out there, Mr. James Hopkins, Mr. James Hopson of Hopkins Junk Moving. There were a lot of other parties that were involved in helping Chapel Ridge get cleaned up. I also see Councilman Verona Harley was out there as well. And my concern is that South Jackson is being plagued with blight, it's been plagued with being left out for years, and so now, these tenants are living in unsafe, in unhumane living conditions, and so, a concerned citizen, Mr. James Hopson, went out, took his own personal equipment, went out to clean up because he saw the story being aired on the news. And then yesterday, council, no, I'm sorry, not councilwoman, county supervisor, one that ever went out with the county and had some dumpsters put out. Now, I saw today on the Facebook page where the City of Jackson is stating that they went out to put a dumpster. That's fine and dandy, but however, it's a Johnny come late. We should have been proactively had this done. Those tenants have been over there three weeks like that. Now again, we understand that that's not the City of Jackson's fault, that's private property. However, we have to activate something soon and do something. And I brought this to attention because Mr. Hopson has applied for a code enforcement position with the City of Jackson. This young man has been cleaning up the City of Jackson for years. He was here with the water and garbage crisis. He was also turned down by the City of Jackson, saying he was not eligible, he was disqualified for a position. How is he disqualified for a position? But he's good enough to go out there and pick up trash that he did not put down, as well as there was not even in his community, but he did it. And again, thank you for Councilman Harley. He stated that you and him had a conversation, and you said that you were going to work on some projects. So I just want to say to our community, we must do better. We are, people are leaving Jackson because we don't have any leadership in Jackson, or should I say forsaken leadership, should I say, in Jackson. I commend Mayor Lamumba for what he was able to do, what he tried to do, but as we move forward with June, our new appointed person that's going to represent the leaders, we have to get on one accord, and let's work to get clean the City of Jackson up. Thank you.
Okay, Lee Bernard, item 44. Mr. Bernard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lee Bernard, and actually, I grew up in Ward Three, and I come to speak on number 44, which is Public Works. We have a lot of trees overhanging Holloman Street between Over Street and Way Street, right by Hawkins Field. In addition to Kennington Street, we have a lot of trees overhanging that street. And when I take my car through, it almost hits the top of my car. When I'm heading down Kennington, when I'm going up Holloman, I have a lot of trees that stretch the side of my car, and I just want to bring that to your attention. We need to take a look at it. Also, down in South Jackson, on Forest Hill Road, we have a lot of trees overhanging Forest Hill Road near Leg Shore, and we just need somebody from, I believe it's Public Works, to take a look at that when they have an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. We always appreciate you. Okay, y'all, we do not do this, we do not do this. It's not allowed. All right, thank you. All right, Kenneth Cleveland is item number 46. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth D. Cleveland. I'm the owner of Universal Solar Enterprises LLC. I'm here to speak about the EV charging stations. Give you a little brief history of my company. We was the first minority company to build a solar farm in the City of Jackson to sell power to the largest utility company in the state of Mississippi, which is Entergy. We took that same concept and put that same unit on top of a commercial building in the City of Jackson, Mississippi, and saved the owner 70% on his electric bill, and we was the first minority company to do that. We just recently installed an EV charging station in Canton, Mississippi, last month, and we was the first minority company to do that. And what I'm here is to address the call from Mr. Stokes to install electric charging stations in the City of Jackson. We have already partnered with a company called EDS, an engineering firm, IMS, which is located here in Jackson, Mississippi. And what we, what I'm here to say is, we are organized, we are prepared, we have done this, we have been operational, and we are ready to assist Mr. Stokes and whoever we would like to partner with to get this infrastructure installed, and we just looking for an opportunity to partner with the City of Jackson and also to the community. And that's what I have to say.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your coming before us tonight. This is all very, it's very interesting, right? Thank you. All right. We're going to move on now to Mr. Enik Sanders. Welcome back, Mr. Sanders, item 51. He left. Oh, I was looking forward to having him here. Okay. Next is number five, Precious Richardson, item 45.
Hey, how y'all doing? Precious Richardson is my name. I was coming back here once again about my house on Gentry Street. It had got burnt, and I talked to Chuck Waylamumba at Walton, and he said he was going to see what he can do. The last time I was here, he said that I'd have to talk with Mr. Gray, which I haven't got because he was sick, so I haven't had a chance to go talk with him. So I'm just trying to see where I am with this, and where should I go, or however, what I need to do in order to know, since he's not here at the moment.
There he is.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Gray has informed me that he has talked to you and that you need to speak with Jai Keaton, who is the Director of our Planning and Development Department. He is traveling, he's not here tonight, but we can make sure that Mr. Gray gets you his contact information.
Okay, that sounds good. I really appreciate y'all to the most. Thank y'all.
Thank you, and thank you for coming before us tonight. All right, we're going to move now, colleagues, to the non-agenda items. First is Christine Cox, who is here to speak to us about Buddy Butts Park Go-Kart Tracks. Ms. Cox?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for your time and providing me this opportunity. I happen to be the owner of the only-
You need to state your name for the record, sorry.
Oh, my name is Christine Kendall Cox, and I am the owner of the only motorsport store in a five-state region. I own Drive Your Line Kart Sport, and I'm also the executor to, the executor administrator for Mississippi Carters Association, which helps you with Buddy Butts Park Spring Ridge Raceway. We have applied for and were awarded a grant for $300,000, $298 and change, and we wanted to see the track resurface because it carries a great deal of history. One, it's in the park, that is a historical landmark. Two, it provides a heritage here that has started back in the 60s and 70s with karting in this region. We want to be able to bring that back, and we also want to be able to expand on this, applying for further grants down the road to attract international and national-level competitors. It brings a great deal of economic value, and it also brings a great deal of highlighting to this region. I'm from Ohio, I wouldn't move back for anything, I love it here. I cannot tell you how beneficial it's been to have a wonderful relationship with Abram Mohammed, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Jackson. He has worked tirelessly to help us see this through, and without his assistance in this, I don't know where we would be today. I want to be able to come to all of you in the future and say that we're moving forward. Mr. Grisell, you and I have spoken on the phone previously. I hope that this endeavor can continue, we have a lot to do with that park, and if any of you have any suggestions or have any ideas that we can improve the park, not just my region, I want to help with all of it, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'd be very, very happy to assist.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your coming to us tonight. Next, we have Mario Johnson, who's here to speak about a court case, which I don't know anything about. Mr. Johnson, are you here? Okay. I don't, I don't see him. All right, next, we have Zach Service, who's here to talk about contracts and salaries. Mr. Service?
Good evening, Zach Service, resident of Ward Three. It's a good evening for a-
Mr. Service?
Yes?
You're, we can't allow you with that shirt on.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I can't be in here with my shirt on. Do you want me to take it off?
Isn't it a campaign shirt?
It, it is a shirt. I can turn it backwards, or I could cover it up if you, there we go, it's covered up and won't bother anybody. Okay, so, it's a great evening for a 6:00 PM council meeting. Many of you are aware that we used to have 6:00 PM council meetings.
Mr. Service, you must, you must, really, you're not even supposed to be in, because this is a polling place.
Okay, got you.
You cannot have it on in this, you cannot have on a campaign shirt in City Hall, and there are signs posted on both doors that state that, so I'm sorry.
Okay, I was not asked by, yeah, I can flip it around, give me five seconds.
Wait, that's my office, and I didn't tell you you could go in there, you can. Mr. Service, you will not be allowed to speak.
Uh-uh, the sheriff still says it's on the bank.
So you, you were, Mr. Service?
I was not stopped. JP.
Mr. Service, you cannot speak. Leave, please, or we'll have to have you removed. You know the rules, they're posted everywhere.
He's done this before.
All right, next, we have Val Vickery, Jacksonians for Jackson.
It's so much fun that I have met so many of you, including Mr. Service. I am a cheerleader for Jacksonians for Jackson. Val Vickery, I'm sorry. I work as a consultant with Jacksonians for Jackson, have done so for about two years. These are the cards that we give out regularly in the grocery stores all around town with the QR code that says, please sign up for a newsletter so you can find out what's going on in the city. That is our purpose. We want a vibrant capital city, and we've been working tirelessly for that. And one of the dreams that we have is all seven wards in this city get to know each other. As I have been going around this city for different events, I have driven through parts of Jackson that have not been the normal places that I would go in just normal life, but I have gotten to see that my world was small, and I have enjoyed making it bigger. And I thank you for all of what you are doing and have done. I have been, I have learned a lot, and my heart has grown in this process, and I will never be the same because I have been a part of this, and thank you because you do this day in and day out. And Jacksonians for Jackson wants to thank the City Council, and thank you for helping us to become known in the city. That is what's so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery, and I think you've probably met with all of us by now, and we appreciate the work you've been doing. All right, next, we have Justin Peterson, who is here to speak about a Public Works issue. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay, and thank you to the council. Certainly appreciate all that you do for the city. My name is Justin Peterson. I am president of State Street Group. We are a Jackson-based real estate development company, and I've had the pleasure of being before the council on a number of occasions, presenting developments here in Jackson, which we are very proud of and which we are very happy about. Unfortunately, I'm before you tonight to talk to you about a problem that I want to, number one, make you aware of, and number two, ask for some direction on. I have thought about the best way and the most time-efficient way, given that I only have three minutes to do this, and what I'd like to do is just read you the text of an email that I sent to a Public Works employee, and then pose the question. I do have copies here with a photo that I think will be explanatory, and I will tender this to the clerk and ask, if possible, to distribute that to you all. I think it will help, but if you would, just listen for a minute. April 26th email that I sent to a city employee, and I will omit the name, but the text of the email reads as follows. Ahmad Al Turk suggested that I contact you regarding a sinkhole that has manifested in the past few days in the city right-of-way just north of the primary vehicle entrance to the Quarter House, an apartment community that we developed in 2021. I have marked the rough location of the sinkhole on the attached photo. There is a storm pipe that connects the city's stormwater system to our detention pond, running roughly along the diagonal depicted on the photo. It appears that some portion of this storm pipe has collapsed, resulting in the sinkhole. I will note that the city fairly recently made some road and stormwater-related improvements along the very path where the city's stormwater system flows eventually into our detention pond. You can see the area of these improvements in the photo. See the newer, darker area of asphalt across Ridgewood Road leading to the sinkhole area. The existing sinkhole condition represents a potential safety hazard, and therefore, we request that the city immediately inspect and repair this condition. Please contact me or Frank Buchanan, who has copied here, should you have any questions or wish to discuss. I then give contact information, and I conclude saying many thanks for your prompt attention to this matter. That email was sent on the 26th, and I have received no response whatsoever from the city. The issue, of course, is, number one, that that needs to be repaired, but that it's very time-sensitive because that sinkhole, as you can see in the photo, is directly next to the main vehicular entrance to the Quarter House, which is, I will say, is a wonderful development that we were pleased to work with the city on. My question for the council is, is, number one, I wanted to notify the council. I think the city's been notified of the condition, and I would greatly appreciate some direction in terms of who best to follow up with from here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you finish your sentence, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank Mr. Peterson for coming before us to, you know, bring us up to date on the status of not only the sinkhole, but the communication with the city. He mentioned the dark part of the picture that's right beyond that. That was a really terrible sinkhole that happened about three or four years ago, I think it was. It cost the city about, we spent about $850,000 fixing that sinkhole that was right next to the post office. You could have driven a car into the sinkhole if you weren't paying attention. And one lesson I learned in that exercise was that you can't just wait around and hope that things get better because sinkholes just get worse, and they usually get worse pretty fast, too. So it's actually cheaper to fix them right away than to wait until you get some extra budget money to go out and address it. So the, this is a timely thing for us to find out about this time, and I would encourage Mr. Wright and the administration to send some people out there to check it out and find out what needs to be done to stabilize the situation and hopefully fix the situation because it's only going to get more expensive to fix it, you know, in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Wright, any, you were looking at me like maybe you wanted to say something.
Sure. Louis Wright, CAO. How you doing, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
We've talked several times, not about this situation, but about other situations. We did meet on this with Public Works, Infrastructure, Ditches and Drainage, and we analyzed it, and we have a plan going forward in terms of not only the stormwater, but we're thinking that there may be some sewer in there as well. So we're going to get Jackson Water to take a look at it also, and then we're going to come back with a plan of action in terms of how we're going to repair this. But I'll get with you and give you more details.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for coming before us today. All right, colleagues, we are now moving on to the Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. I'm assuming that no one wants to pull any particular item out, and so with that, all in favor? It's a vote of 7-0. Mr. Stokes voted from the back of the room. Okay? Colleagues, we're moving on now to introduction of ordinances, and before we get into what is on the agenda, you all should have gotten, we have two emergency ordinances tonight that we must consider, and then we're also going to need to look at the fire ordinances in a, a little differently as well. We can do that later. But the first ordinance, that emergency item that I would like for us to consider, colleagues, is one that you were handed just a little bit ago, and we will need a unanimous vote to be able to add it to the agenda, and it is the ordinance that temporarily reduces to zero the salary and compensation of any vacant positions within the executive branch of the City of Jackson Government, and any positions that will become vacant within the executive branch of the City of Jackson Government. And so with that, colleagues, I would like to see if we have the ability to add it to the agenda. All in favor? Oh, wait, what? I'm sorry? Oh, I need a motion. I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right, all in favor? All right, it carries unanimously, it is now on the agenda. Clerk, would you please read the item?
Ordinance of the Jackson City Council temporarily reducing to zero the salary and compensation of any vacant positions within the executive branch of the City of Jackson Government, and any positions that will become vacant within the executive branch of the City of Jackson Government.
All right, colleagues, it is now on the floor as an introduction, but I would like to go ahead and make, get a motion, if someone would make the motion, to expedite this item for adoption. We also will need a unanimous vote to do so.
Can we ask questions about it?
Madam Chair.
Yes, it is on the floor. Yes, we could, but I would, would you rather ask questions first? Yes, you might, Mr. Foot. I, I mean, if you need to ask questions now, I'd like to go ahead and just get all this.
No, I haven't, I had just got this, so I haven't read it all the way through, but my question in the title is, it says, in any positions that will become vacant within the executive branch of the City of Jackson Government, is that forever, or is it just the next?
No, sir, it says in here until July 1st.
Where, so which whereas is that? I just want to make sure I understand.
It is.
Second one.
Second one.
Thank you, Mr., yes, second one.
All that says is, will be sworn in.
It, it says on down, on the back, there's a back page. Where this, this is, it is through June 30th, 2025. It is in the, it is therefore ordered and ordained.
And so, so the ordinance goes away on June 30th?
Yes, sir.
Shouldn't that say in the title? If that was going to, I just, it strikes me as, you know, okay.
You want it to continue past June 30th, Mr. Foot?
I don't know, I just was trying to find out the nature of this particular thing. That's fine, thank you.
Dr. Amori?
Okay, when you say within the executive branch, that's the entire City of Jackson. So you're saying there cannot be any hiring in the city through June 30th?
Except for, we have, we have excluded certified law enforcement patrol and combat fire.
Okay, even our city attorney's office that's been interviewing and trying to bring in new attorneys?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're saying, or that's what this is, yes. I don't think we can start pulling out departments because, and looking at each one of them individually on this. All right, colleagues, any other questions? All right, with that, I would like to have a motion to expedite for adoption this item that is before us. I need a motion.
To expedite for?
To expedite.
That's the right.
We're not suspending the rules because we're having to adhere to state law on this.
Okay, I'll move for to expedite.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banks, and Mr. Harley made the second. All right, thank you. All right, the item is now before us to expedite this so that it takes effect immediately. And so with that, colleagues, all in favor?
Is this the expediting?
To expedite it.
To expedite.
This is not approving it, this is expediting.
It's just expediting.
Okay.
Now, will the clerk please get it back on the floor? Read it as, 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 as- Read it as for adoption.
Ordinance of the Jackson City Council temporarily reducing to zero the salary and compensation of any vacant positions within the executive branch of the City of Jackson government and any positions that will become vacant within the executive branch of the City of Jackson government.
Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, colleagues, any questions or comments on the item that is before us? Hearing none? Yes, Mr. Hartley?
You know, forgive me and maybe several of my colleagues, but we just got this and a little bit of understanding would be, go a long ways here in trying to...
Okay. Mr. Hartley, I think that there is need for, that we really need to hold off on hiring any more people in the City of Jackson between now and the end of this term.
Okay.
All right. Now, is there anything else to come before this body?
The end of next month.
Sorry?
The end of next month.
Well, it's until the end of the term, which is June 30th.
Right. But you said this month.
I said this month.
Yeah, it's actually the end of 30th.
Oh, it's next month. Thank you. This term, yes, sorry. All right. I need a little thing yet. All right. Mr. Banks?
Just for the record, as we're talking about this because I think it deals more with budgetary concerns, Mr. Malinbecker, you said that you were working on some of these vacant positions to deal with overtime cost, to deal with money that needs to go into the clerk's office and to deal with other shortfalls. One, where is that plan? And number two, I guess my concern is, you know, us being at risk of exceeding the budget during an election year. And so if you could speak to that because that is still an overarching concern, zeroing this, does that still make sure you have the money available to take care of those things and is this going to be enough? Because these are still things that we have to take care of in short term that I don't see on the agenda today.
Right. Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. In terms of the plan, I believe it's going to be presented during the next meeting. So we have to do a budget amendment next month, right, to ensure that we don't have lines that exceed the 75%. What we had discussed in the Finance Committee meeting in terms of addressing the issue within JPD and JFD is to move some funds from vacant positions during the first two quarters, use a portion of that to move into those departments so that they can fall below the 75% at the end of June, right? And so that amendment will be brought before you in June.
Do you have, you have any idea of around how much that would be and is the money there for the amendment or your proposed amendment?
Yes. In the Finance Committee meeting, I believe, and I know Councilman Hartley had asked for that number, it was roughly about $2.3 million in unspent salaries during the first two quarters. What we'll be needing to use, including the amount needed for the elections, will probably be around $700,000.
All right. And it was at your request, I believe, that you said that to make sure that we didn't cross any lines, that you and your office was going to either freeze or take over the budget from here on out?
That's correct. We're getting all that approved. Any changes to the budget?
I just think this kind of aligns with what you said. I think the council just want to make sure that that money is there because 2.3 is a lot of money, you know, for what we have left and what we've budgeted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Banks. Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
My question's to Lega. Few weeks ago, I asked for a memo telling us about how much money can be spent in the state law that dictates the election cycle, how much money must be left in the budget if there's a change in the administration. I haven't received the memo. I hear what Councilmember Banks is asking and following along that line, I want you to kind of let us know as a body that maximum amount of money that must be left in the city budget for a new administration. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I have never heard what the fund balance is and I know people are looking at spending other monies. We need to know what the fund balance. I've heard excuses, well, we're going to get it, we ain't going to get it. And Doc, maybe you can give us the fund balance, but I think councilmembers as a whole, we need to know what the fund balance and how much money must be left before a new administration starts.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, Councilman. We did prepare that memo and I'm going to email it to you as soon as I sit down. I have it on my phone right here to send it to you. I apologize if we haven't sent it previously.
Don't worry about the email.
Well, I just wanted you to know that we did not ignore that request and we have performed that work and I'm literally sitting here typing your names in right now. Having said that, the rest of those questions, and I hate to say it this way, those are math questions. I don't know those numbers. I can give you what the law says. I don't know account balances. I don't know the exact amounts applied to those percentages. I just, I don't even know if I have access to that information, to be honest with you.
Now, what's percentage? Give us the percentage.
It's the 75% and the 25% is the number. We've got to have 25% of the budget still remaining with the one quarter left.
Okay. That polar budget, general fund, everything?
There's some exceptions, but generally I think that's the way you look at it. I mean, again, there's some exceptions and they are described in the memo, but generally speaking, yes, what you just said, it covers everything.
To make sure that we're not violating any laws with the legal department, take the leadership role and making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So if we, as a council, start voting on things that will violate the law, stop us.
Yes, sir.
Because we don't intentionally want to violate any state law.
So one thing I'll add to that and I agree, if you will notice, in almost every order that deals with finances that comes before the council this year because of that, we include in the order a reference to the statute, a reference to whether the item would violate that or not. We include specific language in the orders that the expenditure is in compliance and we don't approve it if it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Councilwoman Clay?
My question is, in reading that, it said 25% should not be spent more than that of that line item during that quarter. So we keep saying 75%. So I think we may need to clarify what we are actually saying in terms of what the law says because it states 25% of the line item. So if the line item is 100, we can only spend 25% of that in the quarter.
You generally would only, well, the most important part of it is only spending not more than 75% during the time period leading up to the change in administration and council.
I asked today specifically...
Yes, ma'am.
From the state and they explained it a little different. So we just need to make sure, because I kept asking if we leave 25% in our budget, are we okay?
Well, that's where the exceptions come in.
And there aren't exceptions. There is an exception. Two laws are an exception, okay? And I understand that, but we need to make clarity on that 25 versus 75.
I think you'll find that it's addressed, but what I would suggest beyond that is, I'd love to sit down with you and whoever it was that you talked to and we'll revise if necessary to make sure the advice is clear.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Colleagues, Mr. Banks?
Yeah. Just to get clarity, it is, you know, colleagues, I think, you know, after hearing the last budget update, one of the things we learned, Councilman Stokes, was that we were just $116,000 away from the 7.5% rainy day fund, which is required for us to have emergency operations, which means, which means if something was to happen, we only have two months worth of reserve budget to handle an emergency, not a year, only two months. If something was to happen, we only have two months left to handle any emergency situation. The other thing is with the exceeding overtime and police and JFD and Mr. Malinbecker made a request and said that from here on out to ensure that, you know, that we did not exceed and we were able to exceed any line items and that we were able to put money where money needed to be. So for example, we know that the municipal clerk's office needs some money to pay for the elections. Whatever the total sum is, it's about $2.3 million that needs to be put back. This does not include the, where we are as far as the general fund loaning to the enterprise fund for solid waste. So this is, you know, times I don't think that this is personal. My reason for doing this is I think that we have, you know, it's nothing petty, we have to make a decision because we are in no man's land when it comes to the amount of money that we are getting from Jackson Water for our solid waste plan. I mean, Mr. Malinbecker, you said our expenses, I mean, our income was like around 960 something, but then our expenses are 1.6 million. That's not good math on any day and so we're at a very unsure place. So not only do we have to take care of those things within the general fund, but we got to put some money over there on the enterprise side for the solid waste fund in order for the solid waste division to even just be able to operate. And this might not still, doing this action still might not accomplish our problems. It's just a start. And so I just wanted to, as Chair of Finances, just kind of bring that to the attention just to make sure we understood why.
Madam President? Yes, sir. Mr. Stokes.
Lega, could you give us a memo letting us know if there's any liability to council members if the threshold is not made?
Say that last part again, I'm sorry.
Whether there's any liability for council members if the threshold is not made.
If the budget, Lega, if the law of the budget is not followed, is there, I understand, yes, we'll look at that.
And secondly, again, from hearing what the Chairman of the Budget Committee just said, it's kind of alarming to say the least. So I would hope somebody would come, would stop spending. Everything got to freeze on spending. I mean, buying pens and everything else because the alarm bells should go off from what he's saying and that's why it's so important we know what's the fund balance. Money that is not already budgeted because we probably had to use some of that money to get through this. So I hope the Chairman would give all of us a memo and suggestions that he thinks need to be made or done to help us through this, this period that we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero. Thank you, colleagues, and I thank you for your flexibility this evening. I appreciate it very much. All right. Colleagues, we also have one more emergency item which we're going to take up. Mr. Malinbecker presented it to us yesterday during the work session. It is, it was, it's not an alarming emergency contract, emergency item rather. It is one that just simply didn't make it to the agenda, but it is, it has a real tight turnaround on it. We need to go ahead and address it tonight if we can get it on the floor. It is dealing with the TIF at the district in Eastover, Leftover, Eastover, okay. So with that, colleagues, I would take a motion to get, to add this item to the agenda.
Sub move.
We have a motion and a second to add it to the agenda. All in favor? It carries unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. The item is now to be on the agenda. Clerk, would you please read it?
Resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, adopting, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended and restated development and reimbursement agreement by and between the city and the district land development company LLC for related purposes.
All right. Mr. Malinbecker, would you like to just run us through, just come run through with this?
Sub move.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about it's going to be midnight before we know it. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, wait, no, we've got to listen to Mr. Malinbecker first. Okay, Mr. Malinbecker. I am, oh, and Mr. Harrison's here as well.
Yes. Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. We do have a bond counsel from Butler Snow, Mr. Trey Harrison and a financial advisor, Mr. Ricardo Calendar online. And so I'll yield to Mr. Harrison to give a briefing.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Trey Harrison with Butler Snow. This is an amendment of the development and reimbursement agreement that the developer is requesting. They're also requesting a second issuances, issuance of the TIF bonds. And so there was an initial issuance and their deadline for making that request ends in January. We're in the process of vetting that request, looking at all the numbers, making sure there is sufficient coverage to actually issue that second tranche of bonds. We're also performing the necessary tax analysis. I don't think we can do that analysis and completely vet it and feel comfortable with it by that deadline, which is rapidly coming in July. And so the issuance would have to be done by the end of July. I think we need more time just to make sure we're comfortable with all the numbers. And so this amendment is allowing us, it's just asking for an additional year. I think we'll be done well before that, but did not feel comfortable trying to rush something to the council before it was properly vetted.
Thank you and thank you for that explanation. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question yesterday, I think I asked this yesterday, if not, I'll ask it right now. The district's a great development right there and next to the interstate and I think it's a great success. It certainly appears to be that. I was curious what they pay in property tax to the City of Jackson, that most of which I guess would come to the City of Jackson.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Mr. Calendar. He may have the accurate property tax numbers and I think he's here via Zoom or Teams.
Mr. Calendar's joining us on live size. Mr. Calendar?
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. This is Ricardo Calendar with PFM Financial Advisors. That's a great question. I have been to the district at Eastover several times myself and do believe that I would also use the same phrase, right? It's a very successful TIF financing for the city and development overall as it relates to the amount of taxes that that is generating from property taxes. I'm going to do a little bit of math here in my head since I don't have it broken up specifically like that. There's approximately $600,000 of property taxes being generated there. And the reason I have it broken up in different ways is because there's actually multiple revenues that are being funneled or would become available for this tax increment financing. It's not only the city's real property taxes, it's also city personal property taxes as well as some portion of county real and property taxes. In addition to that, there's an additional layer of sales tax, sales taxes that are also captured as far as the TIF's financing revenues. When you add the sales tax piece to that, we estimate that the total revenues that are being generated from this TIF is approximately $760,000.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Madam President, I thought it was so important, this issue, that I made a motion, but I am concerned about the district as a whole. I had a chance to ride through funding no often. I guess it got security about funding, but I came through the district and I don't think there's enough activity taking place. I think either someone else need to get involved or the city need to... I think either someone else need to get involved, or the city need to start letting everyone know that we're concerned about our investment. If the district becomes a sinkhole, it's going to drag down a whole lot of North Jackson, and we can't afford that, and that's why we trying to do something here today. But if they can do other things and mend us in the rank and count it to attract people and business and everything, then we need to do it. We don't need to sit back and, and fear that we're, the city going to bail us out every time, and we just not going to do anything. When they first came on board, it was a lot of excitement, and now it's very little excitement. You know, they got to bring other businesses in to generate something, have some other activities or something, because everybody first thought, once we created the district, there was going to be another major development coming. But it's like the district, and that's it. We have slowed down. So, I support this because I don't want to see a sinkhole dragging businesses in North Jackson down because the city need the revenue. And Councilman Foot just asked, especially when the gentleman start talking about how much taxes being paid. For cities, sales tax is so important to, you can't mention it enough. The county does not receive sales tax, cities, and we need every dime we can get to try not to increase the taxes on the people. People in this city can't afford a tax increase. If you ever seen the land sale numbers, it's too many people losing property because the taxes too high. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to go in ahead and try to expedite this one as well? No, we're good. Okay, so this is an introduction, right? No, this is an item? Okay, well, we're taking care of all the emergency stuff at one time. All right, any other questions or comments about this? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of seven zero. Thank you very much, and thank you, gentlemen, for being with us tonight. Mr. Calendar, Mr. Harrison, we appreciate all you do for us. All right, now, we are, colleagues, going back to the introduction of ordinances as written in the agenda. We're now at number 12, right? Item 12? Okay, item 12. Clerk?
Ordinance amending section 58-40 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the Purpose of Adopting the 2024 Edition of NFPA 1 Fire Code and the 2021 Edition of the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code.
All right, no, this is just the introduction of an ordinance, colleagues. But this is also, wait, you can't hear me? The mama in me. Okay, so this really needs to be attached to, colleagues, the adoption of the ordinance number 17. So, this is just, you know, we've just got a bunch of spider webs tonight. So, clerk, how would you recommend that we handle this? Because what we need to do is expedite item number 12 and vote on it so that both of these can go into effect tonight.
For adoption this quarter.
For adoption tonight. So, let's go in ahead and deal with item 12. And colleagues, I would take a motion, there weren't any questions, right? I would take, I would take a motion to also expedite item number 12.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, it's a vote of seven zero. Thank you very much, colleagues. Would the clerk please read the item?
Ordinance amending section 58-40 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the Purpose of Adopting the 2024 Edition of NFPA 1 Fire Code and the 2021 Edition of the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? I think we went over it during, during work session yesterday with the chief. All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of seven zero. Colleagues, while we're on the fire department, let's just go in ahead and take up item number 17. Clerk?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, amending sections 58-36 and 58-37 and repealing section 58-38 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the Purpose of Adopting the 2024 Edition of the International Fire Code, including certain amendments to said fire code.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, this item is on the floor. It's already up for adoption. Any additional questions or comments? We have discussed this previously. Hearing none, all in favor? All right, thank you. It carries with a vote of seven zero. Chief, both of your items are done. So, all right, now, we're moving now to, back to introduction of ordinances, number 13.
Ordinance establishing an entertainment district within the corporate boundaries of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, and designating the geographic areas included within and boundaries of said district and for related purposes.
All right, colleagues, this is just an introduction. We did discuss it in work session yesterday. Joining us with Life Size tonight is Mr. Mike Davis, who has spent a good bit of time working on this particular item, and also with us is Mr. Mitch McGuffey, who's legal counsel for the owners and the developers who've been working on this. Mr. Davis, would you like to just give us a little, since you weren't here yesterday afternoon, would you just please give us a little overview of this?
Yes, good afternoon, Mike Davis, Office of Economic Development for the City of Jackson. This is an exciting project, the entertainment district. This is just part of the process that we will lay out the area, and it's an area that we're all familiar with, be it the Commerce Street Entertainment District is what it'll be called, encompassing Howland Males and Martins, just creating a bustling entertainment component. However, now, there, there are certain factors as we look at creating entertainment districts. Some entities want it because of the accelerated depreciation tax, and others like it to be able to access the tourism rebate component. So, this provides an opportunity for those who want to scale up a business, to, to enhance it even more by being able to attach itself to the entertainment district and be able to go after the tourism rebate tax, which provides for a greater opportunity for more entertainment and tourism.
Thank you, Mr., I'm sorry, were you finished, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Hello? Yes, sir.
So, number businesses that's near, I still like to call it Howland, Males, and Martins, what's going to be, which direction are you taking this entertainment district? And how far would it extend?
Okay, so the boundaries from the north will be as far as, let's call it the Pearl Street Bridge area. To the south, we would look at the Passagula Bridge, and then the, the west, east would be considered State Street, and then the backside, be it Commerce Street itself, would be the, the initial boundaries. And as we continue to have conversations with the opportunity to expand it, we'll, we'll look at that. But right now, what we do have is two entities that we know for a fact that provide live entertainment for at least two to three nights a week, which is one of the eligibility components if one was to look at the tourism aspect of having a bona fide designated entertainment district recognized by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, my concern, Mr. Davis, is that, and I ride through that looking quite often, I think someplace named Two Doors East, near the Carpet Place, and it's a big place right there, sound like, I don't know if it's excluded or not, I think they sell Mexican food. Are they included, not included? Because if you exclude these Two Doors East and others, they're going to start seeing you excluded blacks, and you practicing discrimination. So, what you want to do is make sure everybody have equal opportunity to participate in this. I think it's going to be successful. I watch Martin, what they're doing, I watch Howland Males, what they're doing, but you don't want this project to get labeled as a project that, that's excluding black businesses from there, because there's a lot of black businesses with nightclubs around that area now, and I think it will support everyone. I think securities are good around there. They used to have those cars racing up and down State Street, they stopped a lot of that. So, you know, I'm just saying, make sure that you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, and something good becomes something bad. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Davis, did you want to reply? Excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, ma'am, but still noted, heard, Councilman Stokes, we, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, this is just an introduction. We're going to move on now to item, unless there are any other burning questions on this one, we'll move on to 14 because they're related. Anyway, clerk?
Ordinance establishing a leisure and recreation district within the corporate boundaries of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, and designating the geographic areas included within and boundaries of said district for and for related purposes.
All right, thank you again, colleagues. Mr. Davis, would you like to give us a number of you on this one as well?
Yes, Mike Davis, Office of Economic Development. So, the leisure recreational district is a opportunity to create a boundary where ABC holders would be able to allow their patrons to walk outside the establishment with a open container. So, it legalized within the boundary of that particular district, their patrons to walk outside, and it's in the order, the, the type of containers that they can bring out up to the size of it and walk around within that particular boundary of that district with an open container. So, it adds to the vibrancy of the area as we look at the entertainment piece, then looking at the leisure recreational piece to legalize, to be able to, to walk outside with a open container.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, any questions on this? We will consider them at the next meeting, which will be June the 3rd at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. We're moving on now to item number 15, clerk?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, we just did 14.
Thank you.
Yeah, at least I knew that. All right, now, item 15.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing the honorary renaming of High Street from President Street to West Street to Senator Johnny E. Walls Jr. Drive.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam President, at one time in this city, the state legislature and the city, we differed on issues, but we progressed the state of Mississippi. And one of those hardworking senators was a young man out of Greenville, Mississippi, named Johnny Walls. Johnny Walls died last week, they're going to bury him on Saturday. He left the legislature and became a judge, and we trying to honor his memory because this is still a capital city, and we need to let everyone know all throughout the state of Mississippi that we're your capital city. So, we're letting the Walls family know, people in Clarks, they're the funeral going to be in Clarks, they're at Greenville, the others know, when you help the city of Jackson, you helping the state of Mississippi, and we won't forget you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. We will take this one up also, clerk, on the 3rd, June 3rd, at 10:00 a.m.? Or what, is, do we need a little more time on this one? Is it good?
Yes, we will need to do the advertisement for the public hearing.
Okay, it's coming.
June 17.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for doing that, Mr. Stokes. All right, item 16.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing an honorary renaming of Pillars Court from Love Low Avenue to Pillars Court to Mrs. Olivia Broach Drive.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this lady is only six hours on the street. It's a small street, it's not really a cul-de-sac. She raised her family, she had one son that's a police officer. It's, it's just a, this is just an example of a person loving the city of Jackson and us saying thank you. They, after six hours on the street, they own two of them. And she might be, I don't ask women their age, you learn that a long time ago, she might be in her eighties or her nineties, but she has been that person that really make people in that Love Low Street area feel good about Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. So, same, well, you'll just put it back on the agenda when everything's, so you think it'll be ready by the 17th? Thank you, June 17th, Mr. Stokes. All right, colleagues, we're moving on now to the regular agenda, item 18, claims.
Auto approving claims appearing at pages 4232, inclusive their own, on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $4,187,772.50 for it to make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Malinbecker, larger claims, please.
Actually, we do have a floor amendment to add a payment.
We have an amendment, okay. Tell me what it, tell us what it is.
Okay, so, this is to add a payment in the amount of $55,000 paid to the National Council for the Traditional Arts. This is for the National Folk Festival contract.
Okay, is that the only point?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to add.
Second.
According to his statement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, clerk? All right, all in favor of this amendment? Thank you, it carries with a vote of seven zero. All right, we now have claims before us as amended by adding a $55,000 payment for the Folk Art Festival.
Madam President, can I make an amendment?
Yes, Mr. Foot, you may.
Okay. The, this amendment has to do with state statute 23-15-811E, and it's in, in alignment with the, whereas we had from the earlier item where it says the Jackson City controls the power of the purse, that is, as it is legislated by the city, and within its purview, the setting of salary of all municipal officers and employees. The state statute has to do with laws that, that require campaign documents to be filed by a certain date, and then it says if those are not filed by the certain date, then the person, the candidate or the office holder should not be paid. And so, my, my amendment is to, since the, I checked earlier today, and the mayor has not filed his campaign documents that were due before the 22nd of April, so that's almost a month, and I'd like to amend that we strike out any item in the agenda here or in the claims document that, that pays the mayor any salary.
For a purpose of discussion, I'd like to second that.
All right, the amendment is now on the floor. Mr. Malinbecker?
Councilman Foot, I would like to point out that this particular claims docket does not include salaries. This is a payment to vendors.
So, how do we address, we're the power of the purse, how do we address a state law that, that requires, that says that the mayor should not be paid if he doesn't submit his campaign documents? Is it in the payroll, is it in payroll document? Is a payroll item?
Yeah, so I'll yield to the legal department for the specifics, but I was just pointing out, this claims docket does not include employee salaries. This is for contractors.
Okay.
Yes, but I'll, I'll yield to legal department.
You gonna need more money?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So, as I understand it, the question was about whether to amend claims on it, and as I understand it, that claims doesn't cover this item anyway. So, I guess I need to question restated.
So, my question is, we have the power of the purse, and that's the one power we have, and the, how do you, we, what I want to do is enforce the state regulation or statute that says if you don't turn your, your campaign documents in, Tommy Manor, then you are not to be paid.
So, my, my answer on short notice, without having more time to look at it, is this, I believe that statute is written for candidates who have been elected to office during the time period in which those campaigned. during the time period in which those campaign reports are filed. That's what it appears to say on its face. In this case, you have a candidate who was not elected to office in this situation, so it's not clear to me a hundred percent that it would apply to the current mayor in this circumstance.
That's not the way I would interpret it.
I, I understand, and, and I'm not willing to put my, uh, whole career or integrity on that opinion on, on a thirty-second question that I haven't been asked about in advance.
Sure.
Uh, but if you'd like an answer for it, I can get you one, not tonight, but, but pretty quickly.
So, where, where does the, so where does the power of purse lie when it comes to salaries, then?
I don't, where does the power of purse come when it comes to salaries?
We have the power of per, of the purse. So, how do we, if we, how do we implement that power over salaries? We just had a special, special ordinance we put in specifically for, for one part of the salary.
Sure.
So, how do, how do we, as a council?
I understand the question. The question is, I understand it, is if the council were to vote as a body to not pay the salary of the mayor, how would they go about doing it? Is that the question?
I guess that's one way to do it, yeah.
Well, I want to make sure I have the question as you want it answered, so I can answer it properly. I, I don't have, I'm not gonna have an answer for it tonight, regardless, Councilman. I apologize for that. It's not a question I've ever been asked or that I've ever researched. Um, I believe I can have you an answer tomorrow.
Okay.
But, but I don't believe I can have you one that I'll be, uh, as confident as I would like to be tonight.
Okay. If you could find that out real quick, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so, we're not gonna be able to take this up tonight. Who made the, who made the motion?
I would draw my second.
Who, who made the?
Oh, I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Are you gonna?
Take it back.
I moved the amendment, okay? So, I will remove my amendment.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Foot. Um, uh, there is a reason why we stopped having nightmares. I'm just gonna lay it out there.
No more nightmares.
No more nightmares. All right. Okay, so now we have claims on the floor as amended. Any?
Large.
Wait, what?
Larger claims.
Larger claims.
He's not finished.
I need to cover those.
Oh, you haven't finished larger, you haven't even done larger claims. Okay, Mr. Malinbecker, would you please run through these?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the four largest claims on this docket are as follows. First, uh, is Dickson and Boeing Incorporated in the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, paid out of Fund One Seventy-three, one percent infrastructure tax. This is for street resurfacing, Project Phase One A. Second is Entergy in the amount of three hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, play, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for streetlights. Third is Metro Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of three hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents, paid out of Fund Two Zero Three, Jackson Convention Appropriation. This is for the May twenty-twenty-five transfer of taxes for the Visitors Bureau. And the last is the Events Agency Incorporated in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for the workers' compensation insurance, uh, March twenty-twenty-five premiums.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Ms. Malinbecker. Uh, can you go back to Entergy?
Yes. Entergy, it's, uh, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. This is for streetlights.
Okay, and it's just streetlights?
Yes.
So, that's, uh, almost three hundred seventy thousand dollars a month for streetlights?
Yes, so annually, we pay about four point four million dollars.
Four point four million?
Yes.
For streetlights? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Any other questions on claims? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries with a vote of four, three. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to payroll. Item nineteen.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims numbered three, one, eight, six, one, two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, Doctor, can you answer a question for me, please? Uh, some time ago, um, he would work on a plan to elevate the employees at the bottom in terms of getting paid more money. I received many calls about some list that's out on Facebook. I don't do Facebook, but they are saying that some of our employees at the top get a lot of money, but those who are doing all the work, they get paid by the hour. What's the status of your plan? I think they said minimum wage is what they were getting. What's the status of your plan to move those at the bottom up?
Yeah, so, uh, there was a lot of effort put in to, uh, increase, uh, the city's starting hourly rate to, uh, fifteen dollars. I, I believe we do have a small group, uh, of employees that are below the fifteen. Um, but over the last couple of years, uh, we have increased, uh, the hourly rate for most of the employees. Uh, there are some employees that are below fifteen. Uh, th- this is, uh, some of the, uh, summer youth program, um, where employees in the summer youth program, uh, might be below that amount. Uh, and also, you do have, uh, seniors, there are some seniors that are funded through a grant, a Department of Labor grant, right? Uh, so that, that's, that's a subset of employees that might be below fifteen.
But the vast majority, your goal is to move them up to fifteen?
Fifteen as a starting, yes.
Okay, so, can you give us the numbers? How many are below that, that's not, you know, the seniors and the others that you were mentioning, so we'll have some idea?
Sure, and I, I recently, I think, uh, I, I did send something out, I don't know if you received it. Uh, you, you had asked a question, and, uh, we did circulate some information showing you the percentages, but I'll, I'll put that information in there.
Thank you, resent it. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this, on table? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item twenty?
Order ratifying and authorizing a petty cash fund for the FY twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five for the Department of Finance and Administration.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. We discussed this at work session. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on item twenty? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item twenty-one?
Order revising the Department of Administration Finance Division twenty-twenty-four fiscal year budget.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, we did discuss this yesterday. Any, uh, other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Um, item twenty-two?
Order amending the City of Jackson Compensation Plan, Pay Plan for the Positions of Clerk of Counsel, Chief Deputy Clerk of Counsel, and a Deputy Clerk of Counsel based upon salary increases implemented in the budget adopted for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. We did discuss it yesterday, but just because of the topic, Ms. Jordan, would you, um, or Ms. Martin, would you please just quickly explain on the record what this is?
Toya Martin, HR Director, this item, um, is being presented to the council because during the back, the past twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, um, there was some increases that were, um, instead, uh, that were giving to, um, some of the classifications in the city clerk, I'm sorry, the clerk of council's office. So, what we're doing now is just trying to align those salaries so they can be on the pay range that they need to be on, so they won't be over that pay range. What we did was, we did move the clerk of council up to, uh, the same range that most of the directors are currently on, and also, we moved the Deputy Clerk of Council to the same range that the city clerk is on.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions or comments, Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Martin, the, um, I might question, two questions. One is, do the, when do these pay raises go into effect if they get approved? And then, what is the impact on, on the budget that, on the budget year we're in that ends September thirty of twenty-twenty-five?
So, the pay ranges are already in effect. When you all, um, went, when we, the clerk of council, um, made some recommendations on raises, when we just, uh, when past, when we did the budget this past twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So, those raises have already been given to the department. So, um, wha- what I'm trying to do is just make sure that the rate, the salaries that they are currently receiving are within the pay range that they should be on, because right now they're over because of the, uh, the salary increases that you all received this past budget year. I believe they got them, I believe they got them October first of twenty-four.
Really? Okay.
Yes.
So, so it doesn't impact our budget at all?
Your budget has already been impacted. They are, they are currently already making that salary.
Okay, we need to look at that when budget season comes, make sure we're squared away on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none? Wait, did you, I'm sorry. All, all in favor? Opposed? You're abstaining? Okay, we have six in favor, one abstaining. All right, item twenty-three?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a forty-eight month rental agreement with Advantage Business Systems, Inc., for a Conica Minota Biz Hub C three sixty-one I copier and a Biz Hub three sixty-one I black and white to be used by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, colleagues. Carries twenty, what, vote of seven zero. Twenty-four?
Order ratifying the acceptance of services rendered from UKG Chronos Systems LLC in authorization of payment in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty cents.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, carries with a vote of seven zero. Twenty-five?
Order accepting a monetary donation from Atmos Energy Corporation to the Jackson Fire Department Training Division.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Thanks. Uh, number twenty-six?
Order revising the Department of Human and Cultural Services twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year budget.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. I think we, we discussed this a little bit yesterday. Any additional questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Banks, I'm sorry.
I'm in favor.
Okay, it's a vote of seven zero. Item twenty-seven?
Order authorizing the contribution of matching funds to various organizations for the purpose of supporting the development of the arts or social and community service programs, and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with the entities receiving matching funds.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. We did discuss this yesterday. Uh, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, carries with a vote of six in favor with one abstention. Item twenty-eight?
Order ratifying payment to MCI Construction LLC and Johnson Controls pursuant to the emergency declarations issued to support repairs at Thoma Mall Hall.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Um, item twenty-nine?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a business class service order agreement to install Comcast high-speed internet with Wi-Fi at Grove Park Community Center necessary for the operations of security cameras.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item thirty?
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to, enter into a memorandum of understanding with the National League of Cities Institute for Participation in the Southern Cities Economic Initiative twenty-twenty-five planning grant.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, uh, so the National League of Cities, they're, we're getting fifteen thousand dollars? Um, is this gonna be taking place in Jackson? This, this conference? So, Southern Cities Economic Initiative?
Yeah, so I have Yeeka Hoover, Jai Keaton, Director of Planning, Yeeka Hoover is on the, um, the screen, but yes, so that will be taking place here in the city of Jackson.
Okay. And so they're sending us some money to help us host it?
That's correct. And this is, this is a continuation of a grant program that we, we've been doing with them for two years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. Item thirty-one?
Order authorizing acceptance of the bid of Hemfield Construction Company, Inc., for the post at Fair Street, Ferris demolition phase.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments?
Can somebody explain exactly what this is? I, I, to me, I was misled by the, the way it was, um, uh, approached, uh, brought out, uh, yesterday. I just want to make sure that myself and the public understand what's going on here with this.
So, this is the continuation of the post at Fair Street Community Park, uh, project. This is the, we brought a RFP forward. We, um, selected a winner of the RFP, and now we want the contract to, uh, be approved to start the demo.
So, the demolition is just clearing this concrete and asphalt zone?
That's correct, absolutely correct.
Okay, is it gonna be green space after that?
Well, then we'll go into the construction phase, so we'll do RFP for the construction phase to then do the build-out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Mr. Keaton. Uh, is this a part of, uh, our, budget-wise, are we looking at the demolition, commercial demolition?
No.
So, this is a whole different, separate funding?
That's correct, yes, sir. This is not coming out of community improvement, no.
And is it federally funded?
No.
This is all?
This is the, this is the money that council approved during budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments, colleagues? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It carries with a vote of four, three. All right, item, uh, thirty-two?
Order authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to a professional service purchase order request for the Department of Planning and Development in order to extend the contractual term of hired consultant to provide technical and capacity building assistance for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Program Regulations.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions? Hearing none?
Madam President?
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartley?
Mr. Keaton, or, again, I just wanted to get some clarification. Can you give just, uh, the basics of this? I know eventually we're going to go into one additional year at sixty-five thousand dollars. Can you cover the, uh, just fill in the blanks here? What's this program all about?
Reginald Jefferson Housing. Uh, I have a rundown of basically some of the services that, uh, this consultant provides. They provided these services, uh, before, and there will be a continuation of those services. Uh, they are assisting us with developing our consolidated plan, uh, which also includes our action plan.[1674.61] Uh, those are important because those set forth the goals that we have for our grant programs. And by getting those, getting those, uh, plans approved by HUD that allows us to receive our allocations, our annual allocations. Uh, they will also provide, assist us with HUD reporting, uh, technical assistance, training with some of our programs and our systems, uh, like IDIS, uh, as well as, um, uh, travel to assist us, uh, with some of our reporting and, and such.
Okay, so for additional sixty-five thousand dollars, is that a year? That's a year, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're getting, uh, more help with our grant folks in order to pursue HUD grants?
Yes, uh, more help and with a fairly new staff, it's a shot of an arm for just experience. Uh, the consultants have, uh, several years of experience managing HUD funds, so, uh, this is, experience is sorely needed.
So we will probably realize more HUD funding then?
Um, there remains to be seen. That's our goal, but I, I can't say for sure that that will be the outcome.
We really need that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Any, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, it carries with a vote of five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to item thirty-two. No, I'm sorry, item thirty-two.
Order authorizing amendment to the July second, twenty-twenty-four, order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Jackson, James Mays, Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries with a vote of six in favor, one opposed. Item thirty-four.
Order ratifying and authorizing the payment of nine hundred fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents to Toshiba America Business Solution, Inc. for procurement of services.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item thirty-five.
Resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-five City of Jackson Solid Waste Management Plan.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, if you'll recall, colleagues, we tabled this until this meeting. We've since had, um, a, a public works committee meeting where we got a special presentation and many of our questions were, were answered. So are there any additional questions or comments regarding this matter?
Can I ask a general question, Ms. Weathers?
Of course.
Okay, Ms. Weathers.
Ms. Weathers, solid waste.
Okay, just a general question then. We appreciate all the efforts, uh, completing this solid waste management plan, which is for the next twenty years?
Yes.
Okay, just generally speaking, limb pickups. Are we going to see any increase in, you know, I know we have two new trucks rolling up, or not new, but two trucks out there now. Are we going to see any increase in our ability to collect limbs on the sides of the streets and cars?
Um, yes, sir. We just had that discussion yesterday about bringing back our curbside pickup. Now, it won't be as robust as it was in the past, but we will, uh, revamp the program to where we can provide some of those services moving forward.
Okay, are you going to have a, a increased capability to, uh, collect waste when communities step up and have community cleanups and so forth?
Yes, sir. We are participating in all community, uh, cleanups currently, but yes, with us bringing in another truck, we will be able to provide more services.
Okay. I'll probably begin with you about a community cleanup limb pickup.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Okay, any other questions? Uh, okay, uh, Councilwoman McClain and then Councilwoman Foot.
Um, I just want to say thank you guys to Solid Waste Management for what you've done.
Can you speak in the?
Thank you guys to Solid Waste Management for what you've done in Ward Two. Thank you for helping me clean up Ward Two. I appreciate you guys.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. My, my question is, um, I'm not sure if it's covered in this plan or not, but one of the things I really worry about is, is how many vehicles we're supposed to have and budget for, how many vehicles we actually have, and how many of them are operational? So how, can you give me numbers on those three categories?
As far as the boom trucks, are you talking about a specific piece of equipment or all equipment?
I'm talking about the equipment we use to get the job done. What I, what I worry about is having the workers and then not, not having them properly equipped to do the job and, and then it, we don't, aren't as productive as we should be.
We currently have two boom trucks that are operational. One is new, one is pretty fairly outdated. We are in the process of purchasing a new boom truck, which is the clamshell. That will be on the next agenda for purchase. Uh, we bid that out. Council gave us the funds to purchase that truck. We've also just purchased a duly, which will allow us to pull our, um, I can't remember.
Trailer.
Trailer, but it's another piece of equipment that we use to actually pick up debris. I can't think of the name of it. Um, so right now, as far as debris pickup, we are pretty well equipped for street services.
So is that, I mean, do we have, do we have enough vehicles allocated to the solid waste? Do you need, in other words, there's one, it's one thing to have, we're supposed to have this and then we've only got this. So are we, are we short vehicles in some areas just because we don't have them?
Um, I mean, we can always use more equipment, but to provide the services currently for cleanup, we have enough. We will have enough.
We do have enough?
Yes.
Okay. What about equipment like chainsaws and that sort of stuff?
Well, we don't really use the chainsaws. That's more on the infrastructure for, you're talking about tree, to cut up trees and things like that. That's not under solid waste.
Okay, that'd be under Public Works for, for crews to go out and address fallen trees or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
All right, Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Hartley.
Thank you. Uh, the, one, two, three, the fourth was, it's something that, that I believe is important. It mentions the nineteen ninety-six plan. And it go on to mention twice per week garbage collection, twice per week garbage collection. And I'm glad you have this in here because we keep hearing rumors, nothing that's come to the council, about the city considering once a week. Now, the city going through trashy times now, but if we pick up trash once a week, we're going to be in awful shape. So in this document, we saying twice per week.
Yes, sir. Our current collection contract is twice per week for the next six years.
So no discussion about once a week?
We are currently not having a discussion about once a week collection.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, and, uh, this question, uh, actually pertaining to you, but may be directed to the administration, and that's this, you know, with our, uh, public outcry concerning litter and roadside cleanup and so forth, is it possible that we get a copy of the schedule, a publicized copy of the schedule for roadside cleanup and a publicized copy of the schedule for litter pickup so the public can keep abreast of our efforts to go ahead and maintain and beautify this city?
That schedule is posted for litter pickup.
Thank you.
Um, it is already posted. I believe Ms. Patrick put that schedule out today or yesterday, um, and it was sent to Melissa as well for public advertisement. We have not posted a schedule, as I stated, for grass cutting because we are so far behind. So we are trying to get everything cut before we actually publicize an actual schedule of a route.
Okay, if, um, when that's done, could you provide us a copy, please?
Yes, sir. We stated we will provide that.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, I think we're, are we done? All right, any, uh, if there's no other question on this, all in favor? All right, it carries with a vote of seven zero. Thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Griselle for calling the meeting and for everybody who came and participated. It's very, it was very fruitful. Item thirty-six.
Order accepting the bid of Independent Roofing Systems, Inc. for the construction of the City of Jackson nine-one-one Operations Center Project.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Oh, I got a question. I'm sorry.
We voted. All right. Okay, well, undo it. Yes, Mr. Foot?
Uh, it says depart, the, this is about an independent roofing system and it's the seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Mr. Foot, would you please speak in your mic?
I'm sorry, apologize. I didn't see this yesterday at work session, so I apologize.
Yes, of course.
So I have a question here. The, it's for the bid of independent roofing systems for amount of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And, um, so this is just the roof on top of the operations center that, that is being, um, re-roofed, I guess? Is that what this is?
Mr. Williamson, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Foot, I, I believe that it's the roof and also some of the HVAC equipment that needs to be replaced.
Okay, so it covers HV, HVAC as well as?
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's currently on the roof, so it'll be, you know, completely replacing the roof and.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's what I need to know.
Sure, thank you. All right, now, any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero. Uh, this is item thirty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number two to the agreement for construction engineering in expectation for street res servicing project phase one A with Neil Schaefer, Inc.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We did discuss this yesterday, um, for a good bit and during work session. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, good. Carries with a vote of seven zero. Thirty-eight.
Order revising the office of the City Attorney Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-four, Twenty-Twenty-Five Budget.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item thirty-nine.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two State of Emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item forty.
Order reviewing and continuing State of Emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Thank you. Item forty-one.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal with Granicas LLC to provide the office of the Clerk of Council with ease streaming for public meetings.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Thank you. All in favor? Carries with a vote of seven zero. Item forty-one, I mean forty-two.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, supporting the centennial celebration of the historic WH Lanier Junior Senior High School.
So move.
Second.
We, 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 we all say amen. All right, any questions or comments, Mr. Stokes? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Carries seven zero. Thank you. Um, then we have item forty-three.
Resolution of the City of Jackson, supporting the Mississippi Queens basketball team.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Madam President, we have the, the owner of the team, the coach of the team. They're coming to Jackson from the Gulf Coast. They're going to play at Tugalu College, and we want to welcome them to the capital city. We'll let them introduce themselves and tell them what they bringing to us.
Thank you so much, Councilman Stokes. My name is Tyree Brown and I'm the owner of the team. Um, we are absolutely delighted to be here in the city of Jackson. Um, initially, we said that we were going to be there in Biloxi, Mississippi, however, once we started doing tryouts, we've had a plethora of tryouts at Meridian Community College and, um, um, various other locations, and we started noticing that people were coming from all over Jackson. Um, so what better way to have a women's professional basketball team to be here at the centralized location? Um, we will be a part of the Women's Athletic Basketball Association, which is the largest, I'm going to say semi-professional, um, organization. They've been around for about nine to ten years. Um, so we are just absolutely ecstatic to bring in teams from Savannah, Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, Brooklyn, New York, and just, I mean, uh, various teams. So we are just absolutely ecstatic to be here. Um, our season will start on July the fifth. Uh, we will have a total of, uh, uh, ten games for the season, um, and hopefully we will be able to host the, um, um, the playoffs. Um, so we have, um, actually solidified a partnership with Tugalu College, um, so we're just absolutely ecstatic with that. Um, here today, to my left, um, is, we call him the legendary coach. Um, this is Ted Williams. Coach Ted Williams, um, has coached a plethora of WNBA players. Um, the number one draft pick, uh, I don't know what year that was, Latoya Thomas, who came out of Mississippi State. Um, also, one of our player development coaches is the infamous Ruthie Bolton. Um, so she will be here actually bring, bringing, um, different camps for the children and different things here. Um, so, um, this is Ted Williams. If you want to say anything, and again, thank you guys so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I don't know how many of y'all like basketball, but I love it. I love the women's basketball program, and it brings excitement, more excitement to me than the men's basketball program. But we hoping at the end of this thing that we're going to have in Mississippi, a WNBA basketball team.
Amen.
That will bring some revenues. We want to see this city grow. We want to make this city back like it used to be or better. Now, we want to make it better. And we, we got the tools and we got the people that can help us do that. We need your support. We need you to come out and see the game, and if you got something to criticize about it, let us know. We'll try to make it better. But we are delighted to be here. I'm delighted to be working with the owner here, and, uh, we going to be here to bring some, uh, excitement to the city of Jackson and some revenue.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yes, thank you. Uh, and welcome. All right, uh, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? With a vote of seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. Now we're moving into discussion items. Uh, Mr. Foot, public works staffing.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. This is the, I'm just concerned about on the public works department, the, for a long time, we've, we've been without a public works director.
They what? At Tugalu, they told, yeah, he, he told Tugalu and we said, it's all right. They played the games at Tugalu.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good information. Sorry, excuse us, Mr. Foot.
Well, thank you. So I, the, so my concern is just the, some of the, um, uh, the level of staffing in public works right now. We haven't had a public works director for, um, a year and a half or so, and we, we, I don't know that we have any engineers, and I worry about our ability to respond to situations that come up like the one Mr. Peterson brought up when he came to us about the sinkhole and the fact that he'd sent an email and, back in a month ago or so and hadn't heard anything back from it. Is there somebody that can tell me where we stand versus, of our level of staffing in the public works right now versus what we budgeted way back during last year's budget?
Well, they were in the process of interviewing, so now they can't hire. That, that, that answers that.
Okay, so we can't hire anybody, but where do we stand, though, as far as actual slots that, that are filled versus what, what we budgeted for those slots?
Melissa Rice, CAO. You know, we keep hearing we don't have a public works director. No work in public works is going. No work in public works is going. Not done. The work is getting done. We have an augmented engineering group onboard, Mr. Al Turk, and he's doing an outstanding job with engineers that he has. We do have one engineer that's on staff with the city that's working also. So we, we have public works employees that are doing the work, and no work is gone undone.
So what's the name of the engineer we've got?
Henry Cha.
Henry?
Cha.
Cha?
Cha.
Okay, I haven't met him.
Mr. Foot?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright said, say his name. Be the acting public works director.
Exactly.
You gotta get paid, Mo.
Oh, great job.
He's got, he's got more duties than I can imagine.
But Mr. Wright gets the job done, so we don't even have to go there.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Wright.
All right, was there anything else on that item, Mr. Foot?
No, ma'am.
Oh, oh, okay, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, Mr. Wright, and thank you for everything you've done and been doing. But we know there's a lot of public works challenges around our city, a lot. And highest the budget, higher the personnel, I mean, you know, everything from solid waste to clearing out drainage areas, I know they have to be extremely busy. So in a, generally speaking, how is public works doing?
Public works is doing great. We have some great employees within public works, and they're getting the job done.
Okay.
And just because we don't have, quote, "a public works director" that falls under the CAO's office.
Say his name.
Yeah, and. You say it, brother. There you go.
And you've done a terrific job, Mr. Wright.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
So how, how are we on finishing those items called into our three-one-one system? If someone called in about some type of a pothole or some type of clogged drainage, how are we doing in getting back and replying to the citizens' concern?
Those calls are coming in through three-one-one. They're being dispatched out to the various departments. Those departments are taking care of those and sending that information back to three-one-one. You know, we.
Okay, we're gonna continue to invite people to make sure they call in. I'm not sure about other wards, but there's a lot of public works issues in my ward. And I can just think of one, if you forgive me, Madam Chair, just one second. Turning off of Raymond Road by the East Center, there's a dangerous dip in the road there. And I pass it all the time. People have to go into the oncoming lane, coming down a hill in order to avoid that, and it can, it can do a lot to, you know, damage a car. And the first thing that popped up in my mind is we need somebody looking out for stuff like that.
We'll take a look at it.
You know where I'm talking about? It's on the east side of the East Center.
Right.
As you make that left turn off or left turn or right turn going north at the East Center off of Raymond Road, please. It's dangerous.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Dr. Amori?
I just also want to respond to the question about three-one-one. And I'd like to note that over the last six months, we've seen a marked reduction in the amount of complaints that come back to the mayor's office saying they haven't been addressed, which means that public works is getting the job done.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Amori. Okay. Mr. Hartley.
Just one final question. Can we get a copy of that report, three-one-one report?
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
We are moving on to item forty-six.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. The issue of charging stations, we approved something, Mr. Wright, I think at the end of 2024 with a company that was supposed to bring charging stations into Jackson. Are they still gonna come? They not gonna come? And, you know, because people looking, where could we have them at? It's been a change at the, at the bus station. JRA got some kind of security. The homeless, they used to terrorize people and everything. Most of them not there. Charging station, first-class charging station at that location. I'm not suggesting, I'm not expert. You know, because people are driving these electric cars. People are renting these electric cars, and we got to have some kind of charging stations. And I hope that y'all would talk to this gentleman who was already working. I just met him today when he was speaking. I know I met him before over the years. But we need some first-class charging stations. We need some plans, and we need to get ready to implement them.
Charging stations are handled out of our planning and development department, and the council did approve a proposal. We have some charging stations in, behind the hood building, in the parking lot there. They're up and operating, and they were put there probably several months ago. So they, we do have some in some of our facilities.
Do we have a plan to have, how many we want to have, say by twenty, twenty-eight? We want to have at least four hundred, five, something like that?
Let me check with planning and development.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Griselle?
Thank you. I think the original plan was fourteen.
Okay.
I think we approved six. And so, you know, and I'm grateful for the ones, I actually have an EV, and I'm grateful for the ones we do have downtown. They are level two, though. I would like to see more level-three charges, because that's where your fast charge comes from.
All right, thank you all.
I know, it's getting late.
You're done, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, thank you.
All right, all right. Now we're moving on to forty-seven. Discussion new finance process procedure personnel.
Oh, I left at forty-five, Madam President.
Oh, did we? I know, I did that. I'm so sorry, Mr. Stokes.
Burn structures in our solid fire department. What we're trying to do, Chief, have we kept up with how many structures that we currently have that's a burnt structure, still standing, some overgrown? Do we have the numbers? If not, can we work with planning so we'll know how many burnt structures we have citywide? And maybe during the budget process, we can try to find a way that we can either do something with a tickle or something to increase money so we can tear down these burnt structures? Some of them been up for years and years and years, and they still standing. Do we know how many we currently have in terms of burnt? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Any other on that one, all right? Mr. Hartley, new finance process procedure personnel and status.
Yes, ma'am. I guess last year, Ms. Melonbeck, if you could please address this. We had, you know, after a litany of late invoices and all type of different issues, we had incorporated a process which would help us get a better handle on people getting paid, their invoices, et cetera. What I wanted was an update. How are we doing with that program? Do we, do we have more late invoices coming in now? Especially when it goes back to a year or two years down the road, getting our payments? So how are we doing? How are we doing with the personnel? Do you have the structure in place? Because we were supposed to put in another letter, a layer to put, to oversight into the process where we can get back with our vendors more promptly. That's, that's what I want to know.
Sure. So we do have the key personnel in place that actually does follow up with vendors. We are requiring all vendors at this point to sign up with the city through the vendor sales service, right? And this is where vendors can actually remit their invoices through that portal. The last report I received, we had six hundred and fifty-five vendors that were signed up through the city. And so we are requiring all the vendors to do that, so they can submit the invoices online as opposed to mailing them in. The issue we dealt with, information going to various divisions, different people. But now that has been streamlined.
Okay, and it's the, how's the process working out with your personnel for its capability among work and so forth? I know it's a new setup.
Right.
Okay, so how is that working out? Is everyone getting a fair shake at what they're supposed to be doing? And our levels of working together, is that going well?
Yes, from a staffing standpoint, if you look at the phases that we had, they are in phase three. And this is where different fiscal officers are coming into a central location. The challenge we did run into is a space, because in the hood building, the floor we were trying to use, they had to get 911, emergency folks. And so what we did ask the fiscal manager to do, fiscal operations manager to do is maybe bring in a couple folks in the building, in the other departments, right? They can work with them from remote areas. They can stay where they are until we're able to clear up the space. Planning did bring an order to work on the building next door, right? That will create some more space for folks to move in.
Okay. Okay, so we can expect less late invoices?
Correct.
And happier vendors out there.
Make quantum leads.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Hartley, you have the next one as well, but it was also during a public comment. Do you have anything else to add to that?
What I wanted to do, Madam Chair.
The Chapel Ridge Apartments.
Yeah, is, I'm gonna pass out. Here's a copy of some correspondence. First of all, for those unfamiliar with the Chapel Ridge Apartments, they, there's a set of apartments off of Raymond Road over, actually, is in my ward. And, and due to the ownership actually being in jail, most of the ownership being in jail, and, and I think two or three members, and then the third member is, or fourth member is waiting to go to jail. So the ownership doesn't have a presence here with the apartments. Also, the management company quit, so there's no management. So now we have a situation where the residents are left on their own. And, and so what we had last week was had all, first of all, the Association of South Jackson Neighborhood, Ms. Bowman, Ernest Ward, other folks, they got alarmed about the problem. Once it got alarmed, the media went out, a couple days, you know, a week passed. The situation was getting worse, because individuals had no place to put their waste. Consequently, all the waste build up on the west side of the building, and it presented a public health hazard. You had roaches and flies and, and, you know, obnoxious orders. You had runoff water going down to the creek. You had a public health crisis there. And so I appreciate a state representative, I want to identify some folks. State Representative Nelson, State Representative Washington, Hines County stepped in there as well towards the end to clean up, do the final polishing. Ward five, obviously, we were out there with my tractor Snoopy. James Hobson, community volunteers. It was just a group effort, all because, you know, we felt some pain. Those folks over there was put in a horrible situation for no fault of their own. And so the place is cleaned up now. Place is cleaned up, and as of today around noon, the city dumpster was brought out to the site. So I wanted to thank, thank everybody for their involvement, and I would like to see how we're going to move forward. Again, we have an unstable situation, a nice building, but no management oversight. Some of the things that will be coming up is water. Okay, we got a temporary fix on the solid waste picture there, but water. Then also maintenance, grass gonna need to be cut, security, that type stuff. And I'm wondering, what could the City of Jackson do in helping out there?
Sure. So Councilman Drew, City Attorney Drew Martin, we have, as you know, with you, we've been working on this on the legal side of things. There are several people in the community that are, that are helping us with that. We have identified the, I don't know if the right term, it's not a finance company, but we haven't, we have identified the company that holds the loan on the building. We believe they have a financial interest that they will want to protect. We are going to try to persuade them and work with them to rehire the management company immediately. They need to do so to protect their own asset, frankly, even if they don't care about the city. If we can get that done, that'll be the quickest and best solution for the tenants that are there now, because that puts somebody in a position to collect the rent, to pay for the water bill, to get garbage collected by Waste Management or whoever it is, that's who had the contract, and to take care of the other maintenance issues that you're describing. If for some reason that's unsuccessful, we are just in case, preparing a lawsuit that would request from the Chancery Court permission to appoint somebody into that same position, to be in a position to collect the rent, to act under the supervision of the court, and to fill that process anyway. We're hopeful that we don't need to do that, because I think it'll be slightly slower. But those are the two parallel tracks we're working on right now.
We certainly appreciate it, and it sounds as though getting to the investors seem to be the best.
I think so.
Track to go, but I guess time is of the essence.
Absolutely. And by the way, I'm meeting with Mr. Henefin tomorrow morning about a couple of other issues, including the one that's on your discussion, and I am gonna bring this up with him to make sure that they're not cutting that water off. Time is absolutely the essence. I think that we will have, we've learned a little bit more every day. I think we'll know significantly more tomorrow.
Yeah, and one other thing is that they don't have lighting, lighting there. So Entergy had turned off, I guess, the, the main office lighting that controls the outside security lighting.
The interior, the units have power still, but the exterior?
Yes, yes. Individuals will pay their own power bill. And again, I'm not trying to get our council tied up into a long-term maintenance and the taxpayers' money, but we have to do something to help these folks even for temporary time. So we certainly appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. I want to thank the councilmen for great leadership, and I want to thank the legal department for getting ahead of this problem. I also want to thank the county for coming out and cleaning up, and the citizens who helped clean it up. You know, we have a lot of apartments in this city. It's, and it's in Councilman Hartless Ward today, but it could be in any of our wards tomorrow. And so we slowly gonna roadmap as to what to do when we have this kind of situation that comes up with apartments, where the owner might walk away or in jail or garbage everywhere. You know, with garbage, it can lead to disease and sickness. So I, I think the City of Jackson, I thank y'all for, for caring, because a lot of times, people would have said, well, the city don't care. Well, the city showed they cared, and they did more than just showed it, and legal department is doing what the legal department is supposed to do, following the law, recommending what need to do to make legally, we can make sure this situation would not exist again and that citizens are not being treated like second-class citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one other thing. I also like to thank MDEQ. They came out earlier on and proclaimed this, you know, open dump situation, violation of Mississippi codes. And then the Health Department came out. So once we got their input, then I felt a little bit more comfortable about us, you know, going on in official capacity. But just thanks for everyone's concern, and I appreciate the board and the, the Board of Counsel and support of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Stokes did say legal did a good job, right?
He what?
He did say legal did a good job, right?
No, I didn't say that.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, so.
You taped it, right?
I think I heard that, Mr. Stokes. All right, so, all right, the next one, you may not be able to respond to since you've got the meeting tomorrow, but I just wondered if there were any updates regarding the EYLEA contract?
I'd be glad to give you an update after we meet. We've traded some communications we're gonna review. They are looking at other alternatives, and, and if it's a better deal, then it's a better deal. We want to see and find out and make sure that procedure's being followed, and what's best for the city is being done.
Thank you. I look forward to the update. All right, the discussion review and continuation of COVID-19 local emergency. I think this is something we just have to have on there as long as we're still, you know, dependent, or still receiving some funds. Anybody have anything they want to talk about on that one? All right, item fifty-one is litigation, legal matters. Do we need to go into executive session?
I wanted to say we had a bunch, but no, I've passed on all of it for today.
You what?
We don't need any.
Look at two. Look at two.
Okay.
There's a basketball game on.
I told you you're doing a good job.
All right, item, item, item fifty-two. Monthly financial reports as required according to section twenty-one thirty-five thirteen of the Mississippi Code. Everybody got theirs? Did everybody, you got yours? Yay, I'm so glad, Ms. Clay. All right, any announcements, colleagues? Is there absolutely anything else to come before this body? Mr. Foot?
The, Madam President, I'd like to close the meeting in honor of Dr. Billy Frank Sistrunk, who passed away this past week. Really great guy and a long-term member, citizen of Jackson and pediatrician. It treated lots of folks that are still around today, and he'll be sorely missed.
Thank you.
What's the name again?
Doctor Sistrunk.
Dr. Billy Frank Sistrunk.
All right, any, anything else? Dr. Amori, did you have announcements? You're good, okay. All right, anything else to come before this body at this time? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. This may be the earliest night meeting we've ever had, eight oh nine.